Welcome to the City Council Meeting for February 6, 2012. Could we have the roll call, please?
Alderman Valco. Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moisio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest. Alderman May.
Present.
We have a quorum, because everybody, please rise for a moment of silence to be followed by the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I want to thank Alderman Rivera for chairing the committee, the whole, for the issue of the casino. I think it was a very interesting worthwhile discussion. As you can, everybody can see, we have a few things that we need to kind of discuss and head towards some decision making here over the next couple of weeks and let the Senator know what the city's intentions are in regards to the location of the casino and what the city of Waukegan would like to try to see move forward. I have no other comments for this evening. We'll go right to audience time. First, the signature list is Joe Schmidt.
Leading council members, Mayor, citizens of Waukegan. I am Joe Schmidt, reside at 446 North Sheridan Road, Waukegan, and a president and founder of Fist Incorporated, former inmates driving together. I come here tonight to present a preliminary plan. Let me read from the letter that the Aldermen are getting now. Dear Alderman, for years we have heard and talked about the need to build a bridge from downtown to the lakefront. Fist is developing such a plan. We are proposing a shuttle service operated by Fist that would operate from May 1st to December 31st. From Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day weekend, the shuttle would operate daily from noon till 10:00 p.m. During the off-season weeks, the shuttle would operate on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays from noon till 9:00. The shuttle would also operate on any special events, like say there was a show at the Genesee Theater. We would operate the shuttle at night, making sure everybody was transported around. The project would bring a 15-passenger lakefront shuttle bus service to our area. There would be no charge for the riders, but a donation fare box would be displayed to help the freight cost of the gasoline expenses. The original pickup point will start at Benny Plaza, Clayton and Genesee, and will proceed south to the water in Genesee. It would then follow around to Waukegan Harbor Authority on the lakefront, over to Silver Park, and continuing on to the municipal beach concession stand. Then up the Amsets Highway to Greenwood by Bowland Park and T.R.'s. Continuing down Sheridan Road would stop at Grand and Genesee and back to Benny Plaza. The whole trip would take about 30 minutes. We could run two trips an hour. The shuttle service would also run again for special events. We are seeking support of those government agencies, entities, that would benefit most from this project, to wit the city of Waukegan, Waukegan Harbor Authority, Waukegan Port District, the Genesee Theater, as well as those interested parties who support the economic growth and development of our vastly underutilized lakefront attractions. Last year, when the City Council and the Mayor so generously allowed us to operate the concession stand down at the beach, one of the things that we noted lacking were people. There are very few people who utilize the Waukegan lakefront. Conversely, there's a lot of boaters down there who have no way to get into downtown Waukegan to spend their money, to recreate on the weekends when they're here on their boats, and do things like that. We just think that this is a no-brainer. And as a non-profit organization, Fist is well-positioned to operate such a service at a very low expense. I've met with some people, some leaders of the city. Jamie O'Meara and I have sat down and we discussed, and I think we came up with a ballpark figure of maybe $25,000 total cost to operate this thing for six months. Very economical. Being that we're going to stay with a 16-passenger van and below, we avoid having to have CDL drivers, that we're not charging fares. Again, no CDL drivers. No extended insurance, because we're offering a free service. And we're already doing this under our insurance policy with our agent here in Waukegan. So it's a dynamite idea. It's something that Fist can operate. Unfortunately, we cannot fund it. So I've been going around and talking to merchants, to different organization leaders, and it seems like we have a lot of support for this idea. I'm here tonight to extend an invitation to anybody who wants to call the Fist office, who wants to join in an ad hoc committee informing this, so that we can get this thing off the ground, stop talking about it like we have been for 10 years, and let's just do it. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. We do have-
Do I have a motion to seat Alderman Cunningham?
A motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Moisio, to seat Alderman Cunningham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Well, as I was going to say, that we actually have been talking about this for a little while, and I've approached one of our corporate partners here in Waukegan about some sponsorship money for this as well. We're waiting to hear from their final outcome on that discussion from their internal board. We should know probably within the next month or so whether there'll be some corporate sponsorship for this. We would have to put some logos or wrap the vehicle in some way, but I think that's a minor thing to do. You know, we'll take any corporate sponsorship we can get and put your logos where appropriate to be able to make this happen. So, good. Hopefully, this will be able to go forward. I think this would be, help tie in our lakefront to our downtown and downtown opportunities much better than they are at this moment. Now, I have to say, on line number three, I apologize, I cannot read the name, but it looks like it's 1646 Rice Street. Who's signature?
Diane Hewitt.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner. Good evening, Council Mayor. Thank you for letting me speak today. This is a very upsetting issue that I'm here to speak to you about today. On Thursday, February 2nd, I was out in the front yard with my three dogs, in my front yard, with them on leashes. I'd like you to see these. My dog, we were attacked by a loose dog. It mauled my dog. She took the brunt of things. I'm moving a little slow, because I tried to fight to get this dog off of my dog. My dog was in the hospital from Thursday morning to Saturday afternoon. My dog was back at the animal hospital twice today. I have over $1,100 worth of bills, and those bills are still climbing. I want to thank the Council and the city for ordinances that have been passed above and beyond other communities that have made it possible for this dog never to come back to my neighborhood. After this happened with my dog, talking to some of the neighbors, this is the third time that this dog has got loose that we're aware of and has gone after other dogs. It's not the city's fault that the dog wasn't taken before. One, the dog could not be 100% recognized, and the other thing is, the one was not reported. So it's not the city's fault, and I want to make that clear. But I do understand that the city being home rule has more authority to do things in these cases than other municipalities or the county. And I'm very thankful for that, for all of your insight to knowing what to do and having the courage to do it. But I'm here today to ask you to do more. My greatest fear is this is a irresponsible pet owner. And I'm asking that you be the leading example in the county to make sure that irresponsible pet owners, if they live in this city and reside in the city, can no longer have another pet like this. Because there is nothing right now that will stop this owner from going ahead and getting another pet. And this could potentially happen again. I do not want to go have someone else go through what we're going through and what my dog went through. You see photos of when she arrived Thursday and what she looks like today. I have to carry my dog outside. She's afraid in her own front yard. I'm afraid to leave my home, and I've lived in this home for 20 years and never been afraid of anything, because I know my city protects me. But this is something that I realize that can, you cannot stop. Things happen. But I feel that there's things that you can do. Please look at your ordinances, toughen them up whenever you can, and please pass an ordinance that when someone has a vicious dog that does the damage that this one did, please stop that owner from having another dog as long as they live in the city. Please make us safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very troubling.
Oh, there is one other thing. My neighbor down the street wanted me to deliver a letter that's there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll certainly refer this back to Animal Control and the Police Department and have continued discussions on ordinances.
One more thing.
Come on back up to the podium, if you can.
One more thing. I have to thank Chief Greathouse, Deputy Chief Wallace, and Susan and Nicole at our Animal Control. They are wonderful people. They have called my home, they have called the animal hospital, just to see how my city's doing, and that I would ask, I know, seeing at the county and what we go through on budgets, I know the position the city's in and with budgets, I know it's hard, but I would love to see them have a little bit of secretarial help, so they could be out on the street more. I think it would be very beneficial to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Charlotte Callahan-Wosniak.
I'm Charlotte Callahan-Wosniak, 2110 North Avenue, Waukegan, and I'm here representing the Waukegan High School Booster Club. And I'd like to thank everybody on the City Council who has supported us throughout the years, and I'd like to invite you to our 16th Annual Booster Club Auction, which is coming up March 3rd, from 6:00 to 10:30 Saturday, at the Lake County Sports Center. And thank you for all your support you've given us in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. We appreciate everything you do, too. You're a great proponent for the school district, and you work really hard to help these kids out, so we do appreciate that. Thank you. I missed a name, I apologize. Charlotte, were you all set?
I'm ready.
Okay, thanks very much. Jamie O'Meara.
I am here in my capacity as the President of Waukegan Main Street. I would like to thank the majority of the City Council for attending our fundraiser on Saturday, our annual Mardi Gras. Thanks to all of you and about 210 other people, we had our largest, most successful event to date. Any feedback that you might have, we would appreciate, of course. But I would like to thank you for, you know, for those of you who were able to attend, we appreciate seeing your faces at our events. It makes us feel like what we're doing, you know, we are truly partners, because we know we are. And in that vein, I would like to let you know that we have our grant requests ready, and we will have those packets in your mailboxes by the end of the week, and if you have any questions on anything in the packet, please do not hesitate to call me or Violet. We would be glad to answer any of your questions. And that's all year long, not just when we're asking for money. And I would also like to announce our next event, which is Art Walk. It's February 18th. Colorful little flyer here. They're getting bigger and better. This is the 10th anniversary of our very first Art Walk that, at the time, Waukegan Downtown Association sponsored. So this is really neat for us, so thank you.
Thank you, Jamie, and we appreciate everything that Main Street does and all the volunteers. And I want to echo this sentiment about Art Walk. It is an important event. It is bringing people into Waukegan from outside. They are having fun here. The last event, you could not find a parking place on Genesee Street. When was the last time that happened in January in Waukegan? It's been a while. So they are working. And they're bringing in people from Lake Forest and other communities who would normally not have come up here unless they were coming just to the Genesee Theater. So we are seeing a real benefit to these events, so thank you for everything you're doing. Next, Mr. Clyde McLemore.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Clyde McLemore. I own property at 524 Marleto King Drive. Wanted to address the Council, explain to them my situation. I'm February 1st, right outside here. I came in to pay a water bill. Left from paying the water bill, went right across the street to pick up some documents from the courthouse. Came right back out. I had to pay for them, so I wanted to get my checkbook, so I came back out to my car to pay for them, and I received a ticket for observe, walk into the county building, and a $25 ticket for, because I parked here and I was only there 10 minutes. But I came over to the Waukegan city, right here downstairs, and paid the water bill before I went over there. I did not know, and the officer that wrote it was Sergeant Michaels, and if he was standing outside to see me do that, I felt that the police is to serve and protect. And to serve me would have told me, well, sir, you can't go over there, you have to move your car, and I could have moved to a meter. I understand that the city is hurting. And then, after I addressed this with the Mayor, I was told that the sergeant does that. He stands outside to observe people that walks over there. And I'm like, well, why not one of these kids that's trying to be a police officer, why a sergeant who owns sergeant's salary, standing outside? And we broke. Can we pay a sergeant to be out there to write these ceaseless tickets that I wasn't even over there 10 minutes on? I'm gonna pay the ticket, because they say I gotta pay it, but I just wanted the Council to see it. It's written right there, observe. I've never even seen a ticket written like that. I just want to pass that down, let the Council see it. And I just wanted to say, man, paying my taxes, I see why my water bill is kind of high.
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Next is Mr. Perry Foster.
Perry Foster, 2026 Kings Road. I missed the last council meeting, but I seen it on video, and I wanted to make a comment on some of the Aldermen's comments about pepper construction and how that they should be imploring Waukegan residents that are out of jobs, and I agree with that wholeheartedly. But I also think that it belongs from the top down. We have a lot of city employees that do not live in Waukegan, but yet drawing checks from Waukegan, going back to other communities, and taking the money and run, as one of the Aldermen said. And I think that we should be looking at that as another option of bringing money back to the city of Waukegan. I know a couple of the Aldermen has stated that a previous mayor took that out of the things that says that you don't have to live in Waukegan, but I don't understand why that should not be put back in, as if you've hired from this date forward, you must live in Waukegan to be able to draw the paycheck from Waukegan. If we're hurting in that sense, that's great income to bring back to the city of Waukegan. Also, we're looking at facing a $3 million deficit here, and my only, you know, concern is, we're going to lay off more police officers. It's eventually is going to happen, and as, you know, a couple of the Aldermen said, listen to your scanners. When these police officers are, you know, more overworked, they're, you know, reactive, not proactive, because, you know, the crime is growing in this city. People are moving out of the city because of the crimes. So I implore you guys to look at these options, and not to say that, you know, we can't find Waukegan residents can fill these positions. It's called relocation in the private sector. If you want a job with this company, you will relocate to that town to get your job. So I'm hoping, when you guys are looking at this budget, you look at those options. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. That concludes the public comment for tonight. Would like to take a motion to accept the minutes of January 17th, 2012, regular meeting and executive session minutes. Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Moisio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next, we have resolutions, proclamations, presentations. Do we have the representatives from the Roberti Group here tonight? They were supposed to have been invited, but apparently they didn't make it, so we will skip over that.
Resolution as well.
Yeah, we'll just hold the resolution, and we'll make sure that we get them at a coming council meeting. But just so, if anybody wonders what that was, they're doing a lot of work. I believe, Sam, it's in your ward, if I remember correctly, with the homeless shelter. They acquired a home across the street, and they're using that to teach individuals life management skills, how to get along in the world, how to manage your money, and we wanted to acknowledge that, so we'll ask them to come back, and hopefully we'll be able to do that sometime over the next month or two. Next up is committee reports and motions. Public Safety Committee Report, Alderman Conken.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Committee met last week, Monday. We had two items for, that came up for discussion and vote. First item is Item A, is to waive the bid process to purchase a 2012 Ford F-250 with plow under the state and/or the municipal conference bid pricing for a total cost of $35,183, and to allow, be allowed to outfit the vehicle through Chicago Communications for a purchase and installation of radio equipment for a total cost not to exceed $1,575, and Havy Communications for the installation of emergency lights and sirens for a total cost not to exceed $2,729.70. Emergency vehicle will be purchased with capital improvement bond funds for a total cost not to exceed $39,487.70. The bond cost center line item will be 307-1307-26392, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
Item B is to accept a proposed ordinance allowing the Mayor to execute the mutual aid agreement with the Village of Gurnee and enter into an intergovernmental agreement for an automatic response area with the Village of Gurnee, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Conken, seconded by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera. Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Conken. Appreciate all the hard work your committee puts in. Next is Judiciary Committee Report. Alderman, may please.
Thank you, Mayor. The Judiciary Committee met on January 31st. The first item on the agenda, the Judiciary Committee recommends, and I so move, to have Corporation Council draft an ordinance approving the conditional use permit for a laundromat at 1700 North Lewis Avenue with conditions outlined by staff. And this is, the location is the Super Fresh Grocery Store on Lewis Avenue, but Alderman Newsom would like to hold this over, to have an opportunity to discuss the plan. I do see one of the manager, the owner is here this evening, and he would like to get together with her before the next council meeting.
Sure.
So we're going to hold that one over. Alderman Newsom?
Yeah.
You going to make a motion to hold?
Yeah, I'd like to hold it over.
Well, yeah, it doesn't need to make a motion. She just said, request to hold over.
My next item, Judiciary Committee recommends, to recommend to the City Council the approval of the text amendment application and the ordinance as presented, approving the text amendments to the subdivision ordinance to allow administrative review and approval of minor subdivisions. We did have a discussion about this at Judiciary Committee. It's a less burdensome process for very, very particular types of minor subdivisions. These kind of subdivisions don't address any kind of infrastructure, no water main changes, no right-ofways, no streets, no roads. They're very minor subdivision changes. And that's a little bit of the background on it, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Rivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm sorry, who said no?
No.
Alderman Cunningham is opposed. Thank you.
Our last item, the Judiciary Committee recommends, to recommend to the City Council the approval of the highway authority agreement and addendum as presented for property located at 1343 South Lewis Avenue, which is the old BP on 14th and Lewis, and I so move.
Take a motion by Alderman May, seconded by, I'm trying to think of whose ward this is in. Alderman Conken. Roll call, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. And again, we appreciate the hard work that you guys put into to get ready for these meetings. Next up is Public Works Committee Report. Alderman Moisio.
Yeah, the Public Works Committee met on February 2nd at 5:00. We have one item. Item A, approve the amendment to the 2009 agreement with Lake County in regards to the Delaney Road Water Main relocation, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moisio, seconded by Alderman Beedling, to approve the amendment to the 2009 agreement with Lake County in regards to the Delaney Road Water Main relocation. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you. Alderman Moisio, anything to add for your committee?
Just that this has been a long process, and Mr. Hagerty deserves a lot of credit for doing this. I don't know how many hours a day he probably has to deal, has been dealing with this one thing, and it's just, I'm glad this helps get part of it to bed.
And we walked away with all our fingers on our hands, too.
Yes.
That's a real positive, so.
Yes, it is.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate that.
All the credit goes to Mr. Hagerty on this.
Thanks very much. Does that conclude your business for the evening?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We have no old business. Reports and communications. Item A, we have the report on the sale of the city of Waukegan, $23,490,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2012A, and that report will be given to us by Ms. Miguelski, our CFO.
Good evening. There is no action required by the City Council tonight. This is just an update. In November of 2010, the City Council authorized at that time for us to look at refunding the 2003 capital appreciation bonds that had been issued for some infrastructure improvements at what's now Fountain Square. They're called the Lakers Bonds at the time. And we've been monitoring the markets for that since November of 2010. We went to the markets and priced those. Wells Fargo was the bank that put in the successful bid. They bid on these outstanding bonds. They'll now go through 2022. We had a nominal savings of $2.25 million over the life of the bond issue, which is a present value savings of 1.865, or 8.17 percent. So this will lower next year's debt service only by about $100,000, but we're going to be seeing about a $300,000 to $400,000 reduction in interest payments for the life of the bond issue. So we just wanted to update you on that. There's no action required, I know. We have.
Thank you, Tina. Do we have any questions?
No, I just, Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Rivera.
Those savings, can we here, or put those savings in other areas that can help, you know, as far as the budget is concerned?
Well, next, for next fiscal year, there won't really be an impact. The savings are really generated after that. So the effect is a reduction in our overall debt service levy. So assuming there's no new debt issued between now and then, if the City Council chooses, you could reallocate what would have been levied for debt service to another purpose, be it pension, library, garbage, corporate. But the bond levy is separate from the aggregate levy, but absolutely, you know, you could say we want to reallocate these toward another purpose, but it will be lowering the tax levy related to our long-term debt.
Okay, thank you. Well, you might as well stay up there, because I think you're up next again. Item B, which is presentation of the city of Waukegan, audited financial statements for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2011.
I did print, I did bring some printouts with the presentation, and they're back behind Amy in front of Steve. You wanna stand up, Steve?
Tina, we have these up here.
You guys do, but if anyone in the audience wanted them. So tonight I'll be presenting the city's financial audit for April thirtieth, two thousand and ten, or two thousand and eleven, I'm sorry. Again, this is only an overview, so there's a lot of important information. It's a very thick document. I won't be going to all that detail tonight. The final report is on the city's website. It's been there for a couple of weeks. All of the Aldermen should have a copy by now. Next slide, please. Baker Tilly has served as the city's independent auditors. This is the third fiscal year that they've helped us here. It's my fault Jason Coyle isn't here tonight. I thought that the committee of the whole meeting might run long, and he lives in the west suburbs, so I told him he didn't have to come in case it ran late. But I can forward your information to you, his information to you again, if you'd like to contact, contact him directly. What the auditors do do, though, just to clarify their role, is they make sure that our financial statements adhere to government auditing standards, that they're reasonably free of material misstatement, and then they issue an opinion on our presentation. And we did receive a clean opinion on our audit this year. The city's basic financial statements are composed of citywide financial statements, fund financial statements, notes to the statements, and supplementary information. Due to time constraints this evening, I'll be focusing the presentation on our citywide financial statements and the two largest individual funds, the General Fund and the Water Sewer Fund. The governmental activities are principally supported by taxes and intergovernmental revenues. This includes the governmental services, public safety, public works, and economic development. The statement of net assets presents the city's information of assets and liabilities, and the difference between those two is reported as net assets. In the, in the private sector, this would be considered a balance sheet, and you'd have assets minus liabilities equals stockholders' equity. So we just use a little bit of different terminology. When the city's one hundred and seventy-six million in liabilities are subtracted from the city's one hundred and eighty-nine point nine million in assets, the net amount is thirteen point eight million. Of that thirteen point eight million, which is illustrated here in the bar chart, fifty-two point seven million is related to capital assets, net of debt, so that's our infrastructure, buildings, things like that. Eleven point seven million are restricted assets, so that would be cash set aside for specific purposes such as debt service, which leaves the city with unrestricted net assets of a negative fifty point six million dollars as of April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. Our governmental revenues did increase two hundred thousand dollars from the prior year to a total of seventy-eight point five million, and expenses increased one hundred thousand dollars from the prior year to a total of eighty-three point three million. The discrepancy between revenues and expenditures resulted in a four-point-eight-million-dollar deficit before transfers. In the prior year, the deficit was four-point-nine million before transfers. So while the discrepancy between revenues and expenditures is still unbalanced, the one hundred thousand dollar reduction in the overall deficit from the prior year is a slight improvement in the governmental funds. The General Fund is the major fund component, component of the governmental activities and accounts for the bulk of the city's revenues and expenditures. General Fund revenues finished four million dollars over the budget for a total of sixty-one point seven million dollars. The majority of the city's revenues had a positive variance compared to the conservative budget assumptions. Expenditures finished under budget by four million for a total of fifty-nine million dollars due to workforce reductions, holding budgeted vacancies as long as possible, and enhanced fiscal controls over contracts and commodity purchases. This resulted in a positive surplus of two-point-nine million for the fiscal year. A good indicator of the city's fiscal health is the unreserved fund balance, also called rainy day funds. These amounts are not otherwise committed to outstanding liabilities. The municipal bond rating agencies look for thirty percent of expenses be maintained as rainy day balances to accommodate economic downturns or emergency situations. Over the three prior years, as expenses in the General Fund grew from sixty-three million to sixty-eight million, annual balances of nineteen to twenty million dollars should have been set aside to meet this thirty percent goal. Unfortunately, the city ended April thirtieth, two thousand and ten, with an unreserved fund balance of a negative one-point-six million dollars. The beginning of turning around where revenues exceeded expenses for the fiscal year began with this most recently close fiscal year and brought our city's General Fund rainy day balance to a positive two-point-nine million dollars. This is still a far way off of the targeted eighteen million dollars, or thirty percent, but is a trend in the right Business-type activities of the city include the Water and Sewer Department, as well as the Motor Vehicle Parking Fund. The business-type activities net assets, which is assets minus liabilities, end of the year at sixty-three point four million. Again, as illustrated in the bar chart, sixty-three point four million is comprised of fifty-nine point eight million in capital assets, which would include our water mains, sewer mains, water plant, and three, three point six million in unrestricted assets. Business-type activity revenues increased four hundred thousand from the prior year for a total of thirteen and a half million dollars, and expenses decreased two-point-seven million from the prior year to a total of seven point eight million dollars. The difference between revenues and expenses resulted in a surplus of five point seven million before transfers in the business-type activities. The Water and Sewer Fund is the major component of the business-type activities. Total Water Sewer Fund revenues finished three million dollars over the budget, and expenses finished two-point-five million under the budget as several capital projects were deferred. Similar to the General Fund, these favorable variances are due to conservative revenue estimates coupled with enhanced controls over purchasing. The rainy day funds in the Water Sewer Fund were in excess of the thirty percent target until the two thousand and eight fiscal year, where the balances have dropped and then went into negative in fiscal year two thousand and nine. However, through sound fiscal practices related to our water and sewer operations, the city has reestablished a rainy day fund of three-point-five million at the end of the two thousand and eleven fiscal year. Please recall, however, that the current fiscal year budget, the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, utilized those fund balances as a one-time transfer into the General Fund to meet day-to-day operating expenses. I will quickly review the city's long-term investments and obligations, including capital assets, outstanding debt, and pension obligations as well. The city's capital assets, including land, building, infrastructure, declined in value from the prior year by eight-point-five million dollars, as illustrated in this chart. This is due to depreciation or the cost of assets aging outpacing the city's reinvestment in those capital assets. As of April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, the city's general obligation debt totaled one hundred and four million dollars. When taking as, taken as a percentage of equalized assessed valuation, the city's overall debt position has fluctuated from eight-point-three-nine percent in the two thousand and six fiscal year to six-point-seven-six percent at the close of the two thousand and eleven fiscal year. As a measure of a healthy debt limit, the state cap of debt versus EAV for non-home rural municipalities is six-point-two-five percent, which is illustrated in the blue line there. We have slightly exceeded that amount as of the end of fiscal year two thousand and eleven. The city's employees participate in defined pension benefit plans, and as of April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, the city's Illinois Municipal Retirement Plan was funded at seventy-seven percent after an annual contribution of one-point-two million dollars. The Police Pension Fund was funded at six-point-sixty-one percent after an annual contribution of three-point-six million, and the Fire Pension Plan was sixty-two percent funded after an annual contribution of two-point-six million dollars. The combined net pension obligation, which is the amount of liability unfunded as of April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, is a total of twelve point eight million dollars for all of these three funds combined. The city offers subsidized health insurance for our retirees. The city is required to annually calculate and report this long-term liability. During the fiscal year two thousand and eleven, the city expended one-point-two million dollars toward this obligation. However, the total all-in cost of the benefit for the year was three-point-three million dollars, and has grown on a cumulative basis to almost six million dollars. The city's funding level for this particular obligation is thirty-six percent. The city is self-funded for general liability and workers' compensation claims. Two thousand and eleven started with thirteen point six million in claims from the prior years. One-point-seven million in new claims were added, and three-point-five million in claims were paid out. This left the two thousand and eleven fiscal year with eleven point nine million in unpaid claims at year-end close. While this is still quite a large figure, the city has been making steady improvements in the handling of claims and is starting to reduce this liability over the long term. This concludes my presentation for the evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you, Tina. Seeing no hands, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm sure some questions will come to mind, and, you know, feel free to give us a call, and we'll sit down and do our best to answer whatever we can for you. But as everybody can see, our financial position has not really improved. And, you know, we have some high-profile, potential lawsuits that are waiting out there in the wings that are related to the Rivera case and a few others that could come back and completely gut us if we are found liable. And it's something that we're working on already, trying to figure a good position, put ourselves in the best spot to have the least amount of harm to the community. But we won't know these answers for quite a while, because these things are gonna take time to shake themselves out. But we keep making the tough choices. I will say one thing, that we did speak with our bond firm, and we were not downgraded again.
Yes.
Which could very well have happened, and has been happening across the state and the country. And we were able to hold steady our bond rating. You know, we have some positives that are occurring in the community, not what everybody would like to see, but some things are trending in a positive fashion, and people are beginning to look at Waukegan as a place to come again. And that was, that's a huge battle in helping our economy move forward. So we are on the right track, are where we wanna be. No, it's not gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take a few more years to get out of this situation, but at least we know that we're heading in the right direction. So we do have to go into, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I wanna announce this now. We have one other item. But we will go into executive session following the Aldermen's comments tonight, and as we've always kinda done in the past, once we go into executive session, we just come back out, we adjourn the meeting, and basically the meeting is over. The next item on the agenda, Item C, is the electrical aggregation consultant selection. Some of you are probably aware that the city of Waukegan has been looking at this concept of electrical aggregation, helping save our residents money on their electric bills. The numbers, yes. Oh, once again.
You're out.
I jumped. Okay, got it. I apologize. I'm gonna have to increase the type font size again, Wayne.
Okay.
It's getting harder and harder to see these things. Let's go back up to new business recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A, approval of payroll dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve, in the amount of one million two hundred and ninety thousand twenty-nine dollars and three cents. A motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman May. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Item B, approval of bills dated February sixth, two thousand and twelve, in the amount of eight hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Motion by Alderman Newsom, seconded by Alderman Moizio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you. Now going back to Item C, as I was saying, that this is an opportunity for us to put the city in a position, and the residents in a position of saving money on their electric bills. We've had a number of meetings and discussions related to this. Our Aldermen have been working very hard on this. They've been going to outside meetings, getting information. It is something that, as Mayor, I'm very, very comfortable, hoping that we're gonna be able to pick our consultant for this this evening, and approve this and move it forward, because this will be on the ballot in the upcoming primary cycle. And we're hoping that the people of Waukegan will vote for this, and at that time, once it's voted and approved, we will then look at picking who the electric provider will be. But we all have gotten the cards in the mail where they've offered us as individual homeowners savings on our gas bill, our electric bill, and, you know, sometimes those things don't have the protections in them that we would like to see. Well, what we're working on here would just be inherently from the process, have protections built into any contract. There would be the ability to protect the ceiling rate on electrical power. Obviously, we'd want it to go as low as it possibly could, so we're not gonna certainly have a level there. But we would have ways of keeping the power from going, the price from going above, anything that ComEd would be charging. There have been numbers bandied back and forth in some of the meetings, but, you know, we have heard numbers that could equal a couple of million dollars coming back into the city. And that's money going back into the pocket of the consumer and the, and the small business owners, money that could be put back into the, into the economy of our community, or used to put in the bank, help pay your tuition, whatever it might end up being. We will have to finalize and get the, you know, depending on who the aggregation provider would be, there would probably be some final numbers on that, but it's something that I really do believe we need to look at. We need to have the chance to offer it. We, you know, it is going to be on the ballot, so I'm hoping the Waukegans' consumer will vote to accept it. And it's something that I think is a positive for us, because it's like an economic development incentive in a way. It really is. So.
And we will have a, an effort to educate the public in regards to electrical aggregation, so they can understand what it's all about, and what they're gonna be voting for.
Absolutely, and that's part of why we need to look at the consultant. And I will tell you that while there is a cost of the consultant, that money can be recaptured to the city from the stream coming out of the electrical savings, so it would be a few pennies here and there per household to be able to pay for the cost of the consultant. We're looking at probably twenty thousand dollars in that range for the consulting fees. And what they would do is they would engage in a very aggressive educational process for the consumers in Waukegan, and to make sure they understand what this really means and what the options are, and hopefully, as I said, will be able to move forward. There are a number of cities that are doing this. We're not the only one. So it is something that we don't wanna get left behind on. We'd like to lock in savings as quickly as we can, because there is the potential for rates to grow over the next few years because of the fact that they're decommissioning a lot of the coal-fired plants. And, you know, the Waukegan plant is a coal-fired plant, though we're hoping that it stays online. We don't have control over that. But it will do something to help maintain the rates at a, at a certain level. So if I could, Noel, did you want to come up and make any type of comments or presentation, anything that you would like to add to this? Because you've been really in the middle of this as it's gone along.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure.
You have just run a few, two proposals from Integris and from ICANN on the aggregation consulting.
When did we send those out?
They were emailed last week, and they were in everybody's boxes.
Okay. Yes, Alderman Moizio, was it you?
I'll try to keep this as, yeah, please, as simple as I can, 'cause it's, it's very confusing, in some ways.
Would it help if I gave a little bit of overview of how it works?
If we, tonight, if we picked this consultant, are we then tied to them to become our electrical provider when, if it passes the ballot? The meeting that we had the other day was, these guys come in and sort of, somebody has to educate the public on what this means. We obviously can't. We don't have the funds or the staff to do it. The people that are gonna, that maybe will be the supplier have said they will come in and do it. Am I correct on that?
One of the proposals you have is from a supplier, who is also a consultant. The other is from a company that is only a consultant.
Okay.
And they're not a supplier.
So that, that company, you would not recruit, recoup the money from, then?
Well, you could still, we have the utility tax, and we have the ability to use that money to pay for those. money to pay for those consulting fees. Or, from, from the aggreg, in the aggregation contract, we can put in the fee amount in there, so that's recouped and paid back to the city. So, it can be, it can be a wash for the city. It's not no cost, because we have to pay upfront.
Right.
But it can be recouped through the aggregation process.
Right.
With, with one consultant, the one who's not a provider, they offer the services in advance of the referendum, and through getting the contract with the supplier, so that they provide consulting to us, they review everything, they look at it from a legal perspective, they look at it in comparison with the state statutes, and they have a great deal of expertise in this area. The other consultant is a consultant and a supplier. They also have a great deal of expertise. They have years of work in Ohio. Ohio is the furthest advanced state in electrical aggregation. They've had it for, I want to say, close to a dozen years at this point. So, that particular company has done a lot of work there over the many years. Their proposal is that they would provide the consulting services to us. If they were, in the end, the supplier that was selected for the aggregation, then they would waive the fees for those services. If another supplier was selected, then they would bill us for the services they had provided.
A couple of things. A lot of this is governed by state statute also.
Yes.
Majority of it.
It all is governed by state statute.
It's all governed, so there's not a lot of decisions up here really for us. I mean, there are, but not as many as many people think there is.
Right.
And it, would a good analogy be, this is sort of similar when AT&amp;T was sort of deregulated, the same things is what hap, this is what's happening with energy now. Energy's becoming deregulated. Commonwealth Insurance is not the only player in town.
Right.
In, in some ways. They still, they still deliver the service to you, it's still their lines, but not to get too complicated, there's different suppliers. Obviously, these people are businessmen, they're not, they're in it to make money, so let's always keep that in mind.
Right. That analogy, the AT&amp;T analogy, is a good starting point. This is different because, unlike the phone system, in this case, the city, there are opt-in programs and opt-out programs. Currently, as the mayor alluded to, anybody can opt-in and purchase their electricity from any of the available suppliers. You can do that today, and you probably get things from Direct Energy, and I'm trying to think of some of the other ones off the top of my head. Anyway, I get envelopes at home from some of these suppliers. And you can look on the, on the state's electrical aggregation websites and see who's, who's certified to provide electricity in the state of Illinois. And you can buy your electricity from any of those folks. ComEd is not a supplier. ComEd is an electricity transmitter. Years ago, they sold their power plant in Waukegan along with the other ones that they owned. They no longer create and supply electricity, they only transmit it. And they, they provide the billing. So, if you opt-in with somebody now, or after, after the referendum, if it passes and we do an opt-out program, your bill still comes from ComEd. The only thing that changes is the supply portion of your bill. You have a couple sections on your bill. You have, you have fees for supply, electrical supply, you have fees for electrical transmission, you have fees for surcharges and taxes and all of those things. You'll still get a bill from ComEd. The only difference will be in that little supply paragraph. It'll name who your supplier is, so let's say it's Direct Energy, who you could use today. It would say Direct Energy, and it would have their price instead of ComEd's price. ComEd currently purchases their electricity on the market, like Direct Energy, like Integris, like all of the other suppliers do. And they sell it to us at their price. They don't have a markup on it. And that's the reason they don't really care who you buy your power from, because they're not making any money on the supply. Their money is in the transmission. So, you'll still get a bill from ComEd, and it'll have your supplier price on there. So, that's, that's where you really see the difference. If you have a power outage, you still call ComEd. If there's a downed wire someplace, you still call ComEd. That's all the same. If we do, if the referendum passes and we do an opt-out program, what that means is that the city then creates a contract with an electrical supplier, whoever is the winner of the city's bid process. And that supplier automatically becomes the supplier for all of the residential and small commercial customers within the city of Waukegan. Now, if I choose that, you know, I don't like this particular supplier, I'd rather be with ComEd or one of the others, I can opt-out at that point. And anybody who's part, who's in the community can opt-out. So, that's the difference between the opt-in and opt-out. The idea is that when the city does a bid process, we're bringing to the suppliers something like thirty thousand customers, don't quote me on that number, but it's, it's a significant number of customers. So, there's incentive for the supplier to give you a really good rate when you're bringing that many customers to the table. Unlike if I opt-in on my own today, I'm one customer. You know, my husband and I don't even have kids at home anymore, so the lights get turned off when we leave the room. So, we're not, you know, we're not a big market for a supplier today. But all of Waukegan, residential and small commercial customers, that's, that's an incentivized market. So, suppliers are motivated to give you a good price. The city would then contract with the supplier for one, two, or three years, with whatever terms the city built into the contract, and that would be the price that all of the Waukegan customers would get during that period of time.
Then, the way, would another analogy be, it's sort of like the old cable franchises? You know, because, you know, when cable TV first came in, it was one cable, you had a franchise agreement with that, was the only cable provider you could have. Is that similar, or not really?
That's probably more similar to the AT&amp;T analogy, because the city isn't contracting and setting a price for everybody.
Okay.
And, you know, you don't automatically get cable.
Right.
Where we all automatically get electricity.
Well, some people, some, not everybody.
In theory, yes.
But...
So, our two choices tonight are Integris, correct?
Integris.
And the consultant.
ICANN. Right, you actually have three choices tonight. You can choose not to contract with somebody, that's one choice. And if that were the choice, then city staff would do our best, to the extent we could, though we talked about that someone we met last week that we're, you know, you all know that we're very limited.
What was that first choice, yeah?
To not contract with anybody.
Okay.
So, if that were the case, you know, a lot of people don't understand what aggregation is, and it is a little bit confusing, and it takes some work to get through it. I've been reading about it for a long time, so I have much more understanding than most people. My experience is when people don't understand something, they won't vote for it. So, most likely, it won't pass if there is, in my opinion, if there isn't some level of education within the community, because people don't know what it is, they don't want to support something if they don't understand it. So, if we don't engage a consultant to do some advanced work, there will be a limited amount of education that's provided in the public. We'll do the best we can. As city staff, we can't lobby one way or the other, we can provide education. So, I can tell people, we can put out flyers that say the things that I said tonight, how it works, what your ComEd bill looks like, that your bill still comes from ComEd, all of those sorts of things. But we can't do as much as a consultant could. So, then, between the consultants, we have two proposals in front of you tonight. One is from Integris, and that's the company that is both a consultant and a supplier. And the other is from ICANN, which is the Illinois Community Choice Aggregation Network. That is the group that is a consultant only and not a supplier. So, you have a scope of services and pricing for both of those.
Alderman Moizio, again?
Just, again, to try to help myself and maybe others, is that if we go with Integris, you're talking about somebody who, is there more of a chance to recoup from Integris because they are a supplier as compared to the other one, where they're just going to bill you outright? I mean, we could recoup the money later on with that, just a consultant group, because we're hopefully going to see a savings and be able to recoup that money later. But with Integris, it could be cleaner, because it's, they're going to, they, they do the PR campaign, then become the thing, it's a little cleaner?
You can recoup the funds either way.
Okay.
It's just a little bit different the way it happens, but in the end, it's a wash either way for the city.
And there's a price difference between the two as well.
Yeah.
Integris was, you know, working in the thirty, the mid-thirties. That's what they...
No, Integris was sixty.
Oh, sixty? I'm sorry. I had thought they originally said about thirty-six.
What they, the scope of work they gave us was sixty thousand dollars.
Oh, so that's different, okay. Verbally, one in my conversations, they talked in the mid-thirties, but you can see, that's a big difference. And if I, if I could also say something, too. I think that, you know, Integris is a great, is a great group, and it may end up that they may be our provider, the holder of the contract. But I think to get to that point, we don't want any, any perception that, you know, there may have been some question in regards to the fact that Integris wants to be the provider. And so, I think that if we were, from my say, myself, anyway, I'm really kind of a little more comfortable going with the Illinois Community Choice Group, the ICANN Group, because they're not working to provide themselves with a revenue stream. They're just in it to make this happen for the community, then once it's done, they get paid and they walk away, obviously, from this process. But this, we're still part of this group, and they still work with us in advisory role. And the other thing we have to remember, that if this passes, the city has some oversight requirement. We sort of have to manage this, and we are not set up to do that. We don't have the staff to do it, and we can't afford to hire someone. So, we are going to need someone to act on our behalf in that fashion, too, I believe, ultimately, if this goes through. I think that ICANN would be a group to go to and talk to about possibly providing that oversight service, that management service on it, or there may be some others out there in the market. But from the standpoint of, I think the cleanest, easiest-to-explain deal is having a separation between the end provider and the consultant. And I think that's provided by working with ICANN. Alderman Newsom, and then Alderman May?
I have a question regarding consultants and the suppliers. We had a group of suppliers and information that we received previous. I'm wondering, have you been in contact, or have they been in contact with the city of Waukegan to offer some of these same services as consultants or whatever? Do they have consultants as well as Integris?
Integris is the only one of that group who actively pursues pre-referendum consulting work. The others are suppliers, and they intended to encourage you to put, to put this issue on the ballot for a referendum. But the vast majority of the suppliers don't provide the, the advanced consulting work as, as well.
Have they been in contact with the city to possibly, you know?
You got packets from them, because they all contacted me that they want to be on our bid list. So, if, if the referendum passes and we do a bid packet, or if we did a bid packet in advance of the referendum, which is an option under the state law, they would all like to be included in receiving that bid packet from us. And I think that most of them will respond to that.
Alderman May?
I just want to put in my two cents regarding the selection of a consultant. I'm in agreement with you that I think that there's a, somewhat of a conflict of interest if the consultant also has the ability to, to become the supplier. I feel more comfortable with ICANN for that reason. The, the team leader at ICANN, Mark Pruitt, served as the director of the Illinois Power Agency, and administered the procurement of electric, electricity and renewable energy for approximately five million ComEd and Ameren Illinois residential and small commercial accounts. This guy has a ton of experience. He is not beholden to any supplier. I feel, I feel very comfortable with his scope of services. He, they're going to help us draft press releases, draft the materials to support the meetings, draft the requests, the RFP. I mean, it's, there's a lot of work that our staff certainly can handle with the current staffing levels without something else getting pushed aside. I, I, for those reasons, I, I would like to support the low-cost option with ICANN. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman May. Alderman Cunningham?
Your honor, I think, I have several questions, and I'm, I'm not prepared to talk, to vote on this tonight.
Well, Alderman, if I could add, we need to do something tonight.
Okay.
This has been, this has been before us for a number of meetings.
It might have been, but we don't need to do anything.
Sure.
Now, let me, let me, let me ask this question. Who says this is on the referendum already?
I put it...
You voted on that in November.
You voted to put it on the referendum.
The council voted on that in November.
Okay, so, we, we're on the referendum.
It's on the ballot. Yes, it's on the ballot for March twentieth.
All right, and, and maybe that's me, but I didn't think it was on the ref, I thought this process was bringing it so it'd be on the referendum and that, but, hey, you know, I'm not, I don't, I'm not always batting a hundred. Now, the funding, I don't care who we say is good or bad, who's going to pay for this? And I heard one thing is coming from the utility tax. What, what do you mean it's coming from the utility tax?
It can be paid from the utility tax, not that it has to.
Okay, for, where's the money coming from to pay for it? Period.
Typically, and it would be up to you how you want to do this, if you want to recoup it, then it's included in the supplier contract, or it's paid for out of the utility tax that the city collects.
Okay, so, we, we don't know who's going to pay for it. That's the first thing. And then, the second thing is, we want to go with a company who is independent of the end user. That's, that's, those are some of the things I hear tonight.
Independent of the supplier.
Of the supplier. But my thing is, here is, there was this. If whomever, whichever direction we go in, I'm not looking to pay for anything particularly when the company, particularly the end users, which would be us, or those who get the, the usage co, those are the guys who are going to make all the money. We, we are tired of us throwing out our dollars, somebody else make the money, and then try to recoup them back. We did that with those stop-and-go lights, those flashlights, whatever you call them. We've done that so many times. When is these guys going to pony up where we don't have to, there's no cash outlay for us? So, I understand the need to want to do this, how are we going to do this? But we have not figured out, how are we going to pay for it?
We would include in our contract with whatever electrical supplier is selected, that they need to recover the cost to pay the city back this amount, whether it's the twenty thousand dollars for ICANN consulting, or the sixty thousand dollars for Integris.
Well, this is the biggest problem, though. We're going to try to recoup the money. That's, that's the word, is try.
No, 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 you build it into the terms.
No, you can say what you want to say. Once we've laid out the cash...
No.
Okay, mayor, you can say that, but it's not clear to me tonight, where you're going to get twenty or thirty thousand dollars in order to pay that.
Alderman, it is very clear in how this is structured, that we have access to the, to the company, the revenue stream, and can build into the contract the requirement that this be paid back to the city in full, as well as other types of, we want to call them goodies, or perks, or whatever it is built in towards the city.
Do we have a contract right now that stipulates that?
Alderman, you know, part of the problem is that we provide this information to you as city council members in plenty of time for the meetings. We have multiple sessions where people come to inform us. There are outside sessions that other aldermen went to where much of this was explained so that, for their, for their edification.
Thank you, I'm glad they went there, but the fact is...
And the point is, they're ready to make decisions.
Well, I'm not ready to make decisions, I'm holding it over.
Alderman.
I'm holding it over.
No, we're not going to accept, I will not accept that.
It's not about what you can accept, mayor, this is not your city. This is the city ran by the people of the city.
You want to cost your people a new board.
I'm not costing my people nothing. Tell me who's going to pay for it, mayor.
All right, I'm going to request that we have a motion to override the hold.
Your honor, your honor.
Shh. Alderman, chief, you will please escort that gentleman from the room.
No.
You know you're not supposed to shout out during the meetings.
Many people shouted out here, mayor.
You know you're not supposed to do that.
All right, if you start that right here tonight, if you start that right here tonight, you're going to start all of this mess tonight, mayor.
Mr. Rivera, will you please not say anything more? Please. You won't. Okay, thank you.
Gentlemen, may, may I speak here?
Mr. Gruzman, I apologize. Alderman, yes, Mr. Alderman Moizio.
Sam, or Alderman Cunningham. I agree, those are some of the same questions. I agree, those are some of the same questions. To me, it's a bad business model that we have to front money for a public rela... For lack of a better word, a public relations campaign so that we can save money on the back end. But at the end of the day, I think it's going to save our residents money in the long run. I don't like the business model that we have to outlay the money. I don't like that either, and I understand that. But I don't want to lose a chance to let residents save money on their electric bill. You could do that now. You could sign up with, as the mayor stated, you could sign up with another electric service. Am I saying it right?
Supplier.
Electric supplier right now. But what the aggregation is, again, Noel said, when you... When we go with one person and they bring 30,000 customers, they're able to get you a much better rate. That's what this is all about. It's like anything else. Why does Sam's Club make all that money? They got a bulk. They buy in bulk. It's the same thing.
If I could speak to that for just a second. Not set in stone, but some of the numbers that are out there publicly are that for opt-in electrical supply, which is what we can do now, where you can choose to buy your electricity from somebody else, people are saving in the five to maybe eight, possibly 10% range, but typically closer to five. Gray's Lake was one of the first communities in Illinois to do electrical aggregation at the municipal level for an opt-out system. They saved their residents 30% on their supply costs. Now, that's an exceptionally high number. The more typical number is 15 to 20%, but there's a significant difference. And that's not the whole bill, that's the supply portion of the bill. But still, that's savings for our residents, and that's why we're looking at this. That's why I think it's a good idea to have it on the ballot, and why I think our residents need to be educated so they have the confidence to support it.
Alderman Cunningham, I agree with you about having to put out this money, but this is not... We're not the first ones in this rodeo. It's been done before, so it's not like we're flying dark on this. So my opinion is, hopefully, we can get this done tonight. I respect the fact that you have... I have questions about it. I don't like... I'm not as poor as we are, I don't want to outlay the money either, but at the end of the day, I want to save our residents some money down the road on their electrical bill, and this is the only way to go through the process that, again, the state has set up this way. It's governed by state statute. I don't like it, but I think we need to go with it. I think we need to make a decision on one of these two companies tonight so that, in the long run, we can save the people of Waukegan, even if it's a couple of dollars. We can save them some money on their electrical bill. Thank you.
Well, then, I will say, with that being said, if we are trying to recoup, why couldn't we then go with... Did I hear it was Integris is the ones that are going to do the help promoting, plus be the supplier?
Yes.
Why can't we have multiple people or companies write that bid on this so we automatically know, we will automatically know that we're going to... If they said they win, then they would get, they will pay for those up... We automatically know that. Why couldn't we have two or three companies like the Integris to bid on this? Why are we asking for one who's going to, an outlay of cash, and then come back with... Is that a supplier? The end user's supplier?
Integris is a supplier. ICANN is not a supplier. Most of the suppliers don't offer the consulting services. Integris does.
Okay, but my thing is here, if they have already said what they've said, putting apples to apples, and I do agree with Alderman May, you can't say this person is going to help you consult and promote, and they're not end users. Either we should go with the individual who's kind of given us, we know that we're going to recoup these back if we're able to secure the contract. We should have had three or four companies who's going to offer the same service versus one company offers one service and another company offers another, when this was putting a cash outlay to us, and we hear every day, all day, that there is a strap for cash, and I might, this might be remedial to some, but I can't even get grass cut. I can't even get windows boarded up. But yet, we can dump out $20,000 upfront cash when we can't do it for what we call the frontline, the frontline people, meaning our residents. If we're going to truly help our residents, give them options that we know we're going to recoup those dollars from. So if Integris is going to be the one to provide that, give me two or three companies like the Integris, then I can make an educated decision. But right now, just because this person was a power of this and did that, and I'm pretty sure his credentials and all of the things that he's done in the past, you know, supers exceeds him. But the fact is, this is all about dollars and cents, as far as I'm concerned.
Right, except that we don't know that we'll recoup from Integris. If Integris won the bid process, then they would waive those consulting fees. If, however, one of the other suppliers was the winner of the bid process by most closely meeting our criteria and including having the lowest price for our customers, then we would owe them $60,000.
Yeah, but, okay, Noel, and I'm not discounting all of your knowledge and all the work you've done in this. I am a person who likes to ask a lot of questions. So please, everyone, don't ever confuse me asking as a means I don't like them against. I just, I find some things pretty common sense to me. One, if Integris says they're going to do this, if they win the contract, then if they're consultants, we're getting a two-for-one deal. That's me now. That's the way I'm thinking. Maybe that might not be right in your eyes, but if I'm getting two-for-one, and I might get this paid for at the end, let's find other companies who would do that for us and move on. I don't see, in my mind, the need for someone who's going to consult with me to do this, then come right back and find a person to be the end user to sell this electric to our consumers, when I can find the one company that does it all. In my mind, the one company that does it all can control those costs a little bit better for that end user. That's me talking. So please, help me to get where you're at. That's all I'm asking.
Let me ask you the same. Can you help me to get where you're at? Because I think what I'm hearing is that you want to waive the bid process for the supplier and just select the consultant slash supplier now.
I don't necessarily think...
And not have a bid process.
If that's what we need to do, waive it, then I'm not looking at waiving nothing where cost is us. I'm not looking to do that. What I'm saying is, Integra, forget the name Integra, a company is going to be a consultant for me, plus be an end user.
Supplier.
Supplier, whatever you want to call it. I'm not using your terms, but there is a fee for the consultant. Yes or no?
Yes.
So if there's a fee for the consultant, but the same consultant fee is a person who's going to be the supplier, why can't we have four or five companies who are consultants and suppliers to come and bid for this versus this person who's just a consultant when we have to do a cash outlay? Help me to understand that.
Because the other suppliers are not consultants. Integris is the only one who's...
Oh, they're the only ones who do this?
They're the only ones who do both. There are a whole bunch of suppliers, and ICANN is a consultant, a neutral party. Integris does both, hoping that you'll choose them because they'll waive their fee.
Here's another question, too, that what happens if this doesn't pass through the voters? And we have Integris as our consultant.
I believe both of them waive their fee if it doesn't...
Do they both waive their fee?
I believe that they waive it if it doesn't...
Is it in the contract?
It's in these papers.
Well, they told us.
Are we sure it's in the contract?
It would be in that contract.
Thank you. Now, you're talking.
It would be in the consulting contract, not the supply contract. The supply contract is separate.
Well, the first thing is this, the consulting contract is what we need first, correct?
Correct.
So you're telling me if it does not pass, then it is waived, the fee?
I will personally ensure that that language is incorrect.
Okay, then, well, let's roll then. Now you're talking.
Okay.
The other thing just didn't make sense to me, Mayor. You know, you're saying some things, but if it doesn't make sense to me, I can't help you promote it.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Alderman Newsom, and then Alderman May.
I have a statement.
Oh, Lisa, she had a hand on it.
You have something first? Okay, I'm sorry, I saw her first, I apologize.
The way I look at it is, we have these two consulting packages in front of us that have dollar amounts on them. Sure, Integris is going to waive that, not going to charge us outright for that consulting fee if... But it's going to be, they have to recoup their costs somehow for doing the education and printing all the paper and doing all the work. So that's going to become translated through the energy price, where with ICANN, we have the price upfront, and it's the same darn thing. It's $20,000 on how many million, couple million in savings across the city, or two million, something? So that...
Potentially.
Potentially. So that $20,000 is taken from that pool, translating to a couple bucks per household. It's not, it's not an outlay of money. It's going to be, either way, it's going to be recouped. Either way, the City of Waukegan is not writing this check. I mean, the City of Waukegan is writing the check, the people are paying the money through the electric, the fee for kilowatt per hour that we're going to get. Don't think that anyone's going to do this for free.
I agree with you. Thank you, Alderman Newsom.
I just wanted Noel to explain why we really need to do this right now, because I understand that this is going on a referendum for March 24th.
20th.
20th. And we really have to get this information to the residents of the City of Waukegan in enough time to, that they can make an informed decision when they go to vote.
The polling date is basically six weeks from now. So we have this really short window to educate people so that they can make a choice at the polls that hopefully will benefit them. And I think people need the confidence that they understand what it is so that they can make an educated vote, whichever way that vote goes. So we have a very limited window to provide that education to a whole lot of people. And I don't think that our YouTube thinks from city council are going to get to everybody that needs to learn it.
Okay, the other question that I have is, whichever consultant that we use, will anyone from the City of Waukegan also do any promoting or anything like that?
Susanna Figueroa and I will work in partnership with whichever consultant you select, if you select one, and will supervise and make sure that things get done.
But there are limitations on that. The city can't put more than a certain value into this, into the initial phase of this because there's state statutes and regulations that prevent us from doing certain things.
We would be providing strictly education, not lobbying for one position or another, just purely education, things like who the bill comes from, how it looks, what portion of it is impacted, who you call for a power outage, those types of things, so that people understand what it means to them.
Okay. Alderman Cunningham, would you like to weigh in on your request to hold over?
I'm good, Mayor, I'm good.
You're requesting to hold it over still?
No, sir.
Okay, the request has been withdrawn. I would like to take a motion by one of the Aldermen.
I'll make a motion to accept the ICANN.
A motion by Alderman Moiseo to accept the ICANN, seconded by Alderman Rivera. Roll call, please.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No, no. My answer is no, because I thought we had two things on the table. Do we have just one on the table or just two on the table? I thought there were two proposals on the table.
The choice, the motion was made by Alderman Moiseo to accept ICANN. We're now voting on that motion.
Oh, I didn't hear no... I'm sorry, I didn't hear him say...
Oh, you didn't.
Motion for ICANN.
Yes, he did.
Oh, what was my vote, Wayne, on that one?
It was no.
Okay, then, no.
No?
No. Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Conken.
Pass.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Passed.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much. And Sam, I'm sorry if I got a little loud, but it's frustrating sometimes to try to push some of these things through that we've been working on, and I do apologize for that. Nothing intended personally.
It's never personal.
But we're really trying to get this going, because we think this is going to be a big savings for the people of Waukegan, so I think this is going to work out for everybody's best interest in the short and long run, put some money back in the pocket of the consumer. Thank you. What we'll do is, we'll go to, we have no ordinances and resolutions before us, we'll do Alderman's time, and then we'll go into executive session, and then that's basically the end of the meeting for everybody, so you don't need to stay to watch us come back in and adjourn. So, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. I did go to the Mardi Gras event hosted by the Waukegan Main Street, and it was a great event, a lot of fun, and I also want to give kudos for Jamie and the crew, and, you know, to get people, you know, like organizations like, you know, the Puerto Rican Society involved. I think that's great to have these organizations, you know, involved, and thank you very much for that. I think it was a great event. You raised a lot of money and...
For our members.
Thank you, thank you. And, you know, they raised money, and it's nice that, you know, we see organizations, you know, when they come to the city with their hand out, you know, it's nice to see the efforts being made to fundraise, you know, as well. So good luck the rest of the year, it was a terrific event. Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
I, too, want to give kudos to Main Street. What a fantastic event with the Mardi Gras and the gambling and the fun gambling, that is, of course. It was just a real good spirited event for, I think, for downtown in the City of Waukegan. I just hope we, you continue with that same spirit and have those kind of things to bring more people to understand that Waukegan is a place to enjoy yourself and your family. So that's what I really got out of it the other day, the husband and wives, family, friends, and that's the Waukegan that I know, and I think that's the Waukegan that some of us are so spirited up here about. So congratulations to you and good luck. Second, I want to thank the Senator for stopping in and kind of educating us on this whole casino process. I know I have kind of been a little bit more informed, as you want to say, and as we, what we need to do, what we can do to make sure that, as he would say, the 30th District gets it, but obviously, selfishly speaking, we love this to be in Waukegan, but make no mistake about it, it must be in our area. And it must be in our area for multiple reasons. I think once it gets here, I think we as intelligent people can sit down with the various communities and work this thing out so it will benefit everybody, not just someone. I do want to add Ms. Emilius, who's a former teacher and educator in the Waukegan Public School System, that, to me, a lot of this money needs to go to our schools. The better we educate our children, get them better prepared to take over the leadership positions throughout this country, particularly in Waukegan, the better off our city will be. And that's just, you know, the bottom line for me, so I really would like to thank her for coming up and, you know, I know the Mayor and I kind of sparred up here, but sometimes those things happen. They're going to happen, particularly when you love and care for the city the way we do, the energy that we put into it. Everybody don't do that. And it's, believe us, it's not for the love of the money, right, Mayor? It's for the passion. It's for the passion that we have for this community. And sometimes my ideas are not the best ideas, but what is true, and I say this with all my heart and my soul, that I know that everybody up here loves Waukegan and want to see it be successful. That is one thing I know for sure. We just might be selling on different boats, but hopefully, we're going in the right direction. Thanks, take care, God bless.
Alderman Conken.
I'm going to pass tonight, thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Two things, I just want to reiterate, that casino, Senator Link, I hope paid attention to the contingency plan, because at the end of the day, I'm sure, maybe we need to reach out to Mayor Parnell and talk to him about that. We all know what the best spot is. It's shovel-ready, infrastructure, one landowner, all that. If it's going to happen, it needs to happen quick for the state. The state needs money fast. We have the best site. There's no arguing there. If it comes down to where the revenue split, I'm sure we can come to an agreement on that. That needs to be thought out. And two, pet owners, I hate to see something like that with a passion, it just gets to my craw. I know Anna Finn has been working on this pet ordinance, I think it's coming to us soon. I don't know if there's anything, and I don't want to bog her down anymore on this, but I don't, is there something? And you don't have to answer this now, Counselor, but if there is something about not, people not being able to own a dog after something like that, because we all know that the problem is never the dog, it's the dog owner. It's never the dog, it's always the dog owner. And for some people, that's, maybe this is a bad analogy on my part, but for some of them, it's no different than them having a loaded gun in their house. There's no difference. We have gun laws in this country, in this state, but we don't have any animal laws, and it's no different. But we don't need answers on that right now, but I think we need to think about that. Maybe that's, I think we've all racked our brain on how do we get this, get a better system for dealing with people that are irresponsible with their animals. system for dealing with people that are irresponsible with their animals? Maybe we can do something with that, but that, that's a tragedy. That, I just, that just cuts to my soul, I can't stand that, and we need to do something about it. We need to do more, as Mrs. Hewitt said. That's it, thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, if I could comment on that, I wanted to ask Anna Finn a question.
Go ahead.
Didn't we, in the animal ordinance, didn't we talk about if, if the, if the animal was involved in a, you know, bites, or, you know, this nature? Didn't we have some sort of language in there that they can't, you know, they're not going to be able to own the dog anymore, or, you know, so many bites, you know, they're not allowed to have that, that type of, of a dog? I, I don't know if we had that sort of language in there. I thought we did.
There was a proposal for restrictions on people being able to own animals if they had been found guilty of some sort of offense against animals, the ordinance or state statute, but nothing that would restrict someone's dog who bits another dog.
Oh, I see.
From having a dog.
Okay, maybe we should think about some, you know, putting something like that in the, in the ordinance, so.
There are ordinances like that in other communities, and you have to be careful, though, that you don't step over into constitutional issues, too.
Right, right.
But we definitely need to look at that, I agree, and that will be put on the, on the table.
Alderman Beedling.
I only have about 30 minutes' worth of comments. I'd like to start with the Executive Director and the President of Main Street. I didn't know what to expect, it was the first time I ever went to your, your event. Very nicely decorated, very efficiently run. I walked away very, very impressed, and I have to comment, your blackjack dealer at the table that I sat at, I think she must have raised some pretty good money there, because she relieved me a $40 in short order. Didn't take long. And also, I'd like to make a comment, there was a gang incident in my ward, in the 600 block of Lorraine. The Waukegan Police Department was on it immediately, four arrests have been made, and the tenant moved out last Saturday. So that worked out very well, but I, I'd like to compliment our chief, he runs a, he does a very good job himself, runs a very professional department, and I think our police department gets bashed a lot of times at these meetings, but they do an excellent job, they're very quick to the call, they cover each other very efficiently, and I'm, I'm impressed on a daily basis with, with the job that you do, Chief, and, and your officers in your department. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Alderman Newsom. Pass. Alderman May.
I also, kudos to Main Street, that was awesome. I just want to remind everyone that on Wednesday, February 22nd, the Waukegan Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring Wake Up with Waukegan.